Hello, everybody, and welcome to the November 13, 2023 Borough Council meeting for the Metatchen Borough Council. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law 1975, Chapter 231. Said notice was sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on December 21, 2022, posted in Borough Hall and on file in the Clerk's office. All requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Please join me for flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Zuban?
Councilmember Branch?
Here.
Councilmember Janboi?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilmember Hyman?
Here.
Councilmember Candell?
Here.
Council President Delia?
Here.
Mayor Bush?
Here.
Is there a motion to open the agenda session?
I make a motion to open the agenda session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have nothing today.
Okay.
We need to close the agenda session.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the agenda session?
I make a motion to close the agenda session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda session is now closed. All right, we're now into the best practices inventory for 2023. Has everybody reviewed the best practices inventory?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Are there any questions? Any questions on the best practices inventory? Is there a motion to accept it?
I make a motion to accept the best practices inventory.
Been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, we're going to open public comment to anyone wishing to address the Borough Council and Mayor. Cover the microphone. Anyone?
I was going to say, come on forward.
Hi, just your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Ryan Siegel, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Good evening, Council. We're here from Robert Wood Johnson Hospital in New Brunswick. We're 1,700 nurses that have been on strike for over 100 days now since August 4 without health insurance since September 1. Hopefully, you guys received an email from our nurses. We're requesting support for a resolution to be passed, supporting the nurses, the strike, and safe staffing bills that are in the legislature. So, we're here tonight. We wanted to follow up and see if you have any plans on supporting that.
So, I'd be interested in, I don't know that I actually got the information. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I know that you all came, but I'd be happy to take whatever that gentleman is holding up.
Sure.
We'll take whatever information with respect to legislation. As a matter of course, our council doesn't pass legisla, or just pass resolutions for matters that have less to do with borough business, but I think we're really interested, obviously, in supporting nurses as much as possible. I know that you're in the middle of a labor dispute, and that's something that we've been following quite closely, just as residents, I think, of the area. I think Robert Wood Johnson and the staff at Robert Wood Johnson are very important to this community, just like Hackensack and Atlantic Health and some of the other systems. And I know how important your roles are in that, but I, we're not going to be passing a resolution on that, but we will be very interested in whatever information you have so that we could look into it and maybe have individual discussions possibly with our state legislators about that.
And we would like to stress that we are on strike for safe patient staffing ratios. You know, we're not striking for pay increase. It's all about safe patient ratios. And even though it's in the legislature and, you know, this is local, it really, this affects the community, as you know.
Yeah, very much.
Very largely, so that's why we are looking for support on getting resolutions from townships.
I appreciate it. Whatever you have, I'd be very interested in reading that.
Sure.
We'll make sure everybody has it. I know that there was an email. I don't know that I was on it, but either way, let's get whatever information you have.
We'd be happy to answer any questions tonight or in the future.
All right, Mr. Siegel, thank you. If you could just, you could hand that to our clerk, that'd be great. Thank you. Other comments from the public? Our clerk, I'm sorry, on the left.
Yep.
Oh, you're right, excuse me. Hi, just name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Lubov Smernova. I am resident of Metatchen. I am also one of the nurses from Robert Wood Johnson. I just want to stress out that it's not only unfair labor practice, you know, and strike, it's a public issue because we see patients and residents from our township, from townships around Metatchen, and we are Level 1 Trauma Center, so we get the sickest patients. So, many patients we get from JFK, from Princeton, you know, and it's, we want to do the care. We want to do our best, but it's not possible because we are so understaffed. And when you get to the hospital, it's not a good time in anybody's life. You come for help, and we're the one who face the patient and the families first, and pediatric nurse. So, for me, patient is always the family. There is a mother, there is father, or somebody else. So, if you need anything, we are there for you. We forget about our family, but, you know, we want to do our best. And at the end of the day, we want to go home, and we will know that we did everything that possible for that patient. We call my patient, I call my child, you know, because it's a kids. So, please, and there is a lot of townships, Highland Park, Edison, who passed the resolution. Please, also, the last time on the council meeting, we talked about the bills, safe staffing bills. Please ask, you know, to support those bills. It's very, very important, and we are one of the first one in New Jersey to standing to make it legal. In California, it's already for 20 years the law in place, and they're doing very well. There is many researches done that it's benefit the patient, the benefits the staffing, the hospital, our working condition, it's our patient care conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just really quick, it's my understanding that the bill that you're discussing is actually sponsored by Senator Diagnan, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
We actually did multiple calls, you know, we go to politician and we ask support for those bills. They, I believe, on the table for almost 10 years, so they need to be passed. So, every facility will benefit, and every member of community will benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public?
Good evening. My name is Paul Bradley. I live at 22 Center Street. Recently, with the decision to go coinless with all the parking meters, we now have a situation around by the post office. Around there, there are about four or five areas to park for free for short-term usage, but during peak times, those are not enough spaces, and people are then forced to park in meter spaces. All the meters have been disemboweled, and now there are just these Park Smarter stickers on all of them, the QR code, right? The minimum charge now is $2. A dollar for parking and a dollar for Park Smarter. So, we may have created the most expensive short-term meter parking.
That's not accurate. You can continue, but that's not accurate. We'll correct it if you want to go through all your, yeah.
Okay. I found out about this a day or two after the previous council meeting, and I'm walking down New Street, and two in a row, right next to each other, people holding coins, wondering what to do. One couple spoke no English, they walked away, I hope they didn't get a ticket. The next day, I'm on Pearl Street, and an elderly woman, quite well dressed, holding her coins, and I said, "No can do." And she said, "Well, I tried to create a card once, and my card was hacked. I'm not comfortable doing this. Why am I forced to do this?" And I thought back to the council meeting, and I said, "Because they don't care about you." I heard the rationale for this, and it was like, the borough this, the bank that, the borough this, nothing about the people. It almost sounded like a CEO explaining a decision by management to close a factory or something like that. So, then I crossed the street, and I go to the parking lot behind Metatchen News and see every day, people struggling with that pay station. Everybody hates it, even the parking enforcement officers don't like it. And a woman, we locked eyes, and she's also elderly, and she said, "Well, they don't make these things for our generation." And I said, "Yeah, because I heard then that the DPW has better things to do with their time than collect coins to accommodate people who are not tech savvy and just are not comfortable using the system." Basically, for people like that, it's get with the program if you want to be downtown or get lost, right? If people think that going coinless is so great, I would say, put your money where your mouth is. Have the borough eat the bank fees that go with this and the service charges that go with this. Otherwise, you're just forcing people to pay more for something that they may or may not want, right? And that, because basically, you're saying, "We want to do business this way, and we're going to force you to do business this way and pay for the way we want you to do business." And to me, that's bullying. That's not governance.
I'm sorry, that's what?
Bullying.
Oh.
That's not governance, not to me. Now, I don't know the political philosophy of each of you in terms of governance, right? I mean, mine is that you look, you always put the most vulnerable people first, those compromised financially, educationally, mentally, physically, even generationally, whether old or young. You don't have to agree with me, of course. You just don't. But please, nobody say to me this intellectually bankrupt argument that, "Well, other towns have gone coinless." Yes, some have. Some haven't. Montclair has still used coins. They're not kowtowed by the banks, right? So, at the minimum, could you please maybe do something about this situation around the post office? I would suggest, actually, if you want a more efficient enforcement of parking, to get rid of all the meters over there. They're hardly used because it's a professional service district, right? And Victorian office rentals allows people, that has parking behind those buildings for clients, right, and staff over there. They're hardly ever used. You already have some two-hour parking zone on Amboy Avenue, if you get near the Woodstock. How about you just make all that area two-hour parking? And let the parking enforcement officers focus on where the money really is, because it's not over there. It just isn't, right? So, I want to thank you for hearing me out. I hope you know, I know some of you, like the mayor knows, that agreement and respect are not the same thing. Sometimes they go together, sometimes they don't. But my respect is always there, or I would not come to talk with you, right? And by the same token, criticism and ill will are not the same thing. I hold ill will towards nobody. Life's too short for that. So, thank you for hearing me out, and I want to wish you and yours a happy Thanksgiving. Good night.
Thanks, Paul. Happy Thanksgiving. I just, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and you and I have had some good debates over the years, but, I mean, to call us bullies, that's what you did. Just, I mean, just to say, to call us bullies over a parking policy decision that was made in a very difficult way for all of us because we were in a position, obviously, to make some changes, which I think were needed, and the coinless part of it is only one aspect of a number of changes that were, that were made, I think is a little below the belt, but I also respect that you could say whatever you want at that microphone, and we will listen to you and hear you and, and take what you've said, you know, into mind. You know, the reasons that we've done this are numerous. It's not easy. It's not easy for me when I have coins. I'd like to be able to put them in the, in the meter at times, but I also recognize some of the basis for why we did this, and it's not just because other towns do it. The same reason why, when one of the nurses came up and said, you know, when Highland Park and Edison have adopted this, it's a fair, fair thing, and I'm glad to hear that Edison and Highland Park obviously had a successful dialogue with you on that regard. But we all have to do our own thing to make the best decisions for our own communities based on our own philosophy and policy decisions, which are never easy as you're sitting up here, and all of you in your respective roles. I see volunteers here for committees and commissions, you, in your own capacity. I know the nurses, you're going through a lot right now in your negotiations with the, with the hospital system. We all are put in tough spots, but in the end, you have to balance all the interests and make the best decision possible. Jason, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, just to correct the record, I guess. So, you mentioned a dollar fee for the parking and then a dollar fee for Park Smarter. That wouldn't be accurate necessarily. Obviously, the first one's going to depend on how long your parking, right? So, in your situation, they're maybe running to the post office, so they're probably parking for 30 minutes for 50 cents. And the actual fee to Park Smarter, where you may be confused is, it used to be a dollar to feed, to use Park Smarter. We are eating 50 cents of that because we, we understood that this change was going to be tough for the community to take, and we are, the borough is eating 50 cents of every single one of those transactions. So, 50 cents to park for 30 minutes, 50 cents for the Park Smarter app, so a buck.
I, and I do want to clarify respectfully. It is, it was not a matter of the DPW had something, better things to do with their time. It was a fiscally responsible decision, and I think that was made clear at our last Borough Council meeting, was that it cost us more to have them collecting the coins than it did in the coinage that we were collecting. So, it was, it was not something corporate or, or bullying or that we don't care about you, which is what you said. We do care, and we care about how we spend our money. And so, it was, it was a well-thought-out decision to make that change, where we were being responsible with the money that we spend in this town.
Any other comments from members?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Also, before, like when the backlot was just paved and they put in the parking app, yes, people were paying a dollar for the privilege of using the app because there are costs involved with that. One of the costs is every time someone uses that app, there is a transmission electronically to San Francisco. So, it, it has to be paid for because we get charged. So, what happened was, when we came out with the new parking plan with the 15-minute free parking and, and the no coins and all of that stuff, the borough decided to take a hit, and the hit isn't just really on the borough like it, like a nameless, lifeless entity, but it's really the taxpayers. So, in other words, before, if someone came from other towns and they were being charged a dollar, we were getting the full amount it cost to do it. But trying to show that we do have a heart, the amount was cut in half, and now the taxpayers are sharing that other 50 cents, whether it's Metatchen people that park there or people that come from Woodbridge or Sayerville or wherever, they come to our town, we are now subsidizing them, the taxpayers, trying to, to give a little bit and, and show that we do care and to reduce the price a little bit. And also, other considerations is that people don't realize that the meters run with the backup battery. The battery costs, I think, about $35 or something. Those batteries last about three months. So, every three months, approximately, you know, depending on how long everything lasts, they have to change out these batteries at $35 apiece, and there's about 186 meters in the borough. So, that's why these decisions were made. We have to make sure that the system works, whether it is with coins or no coins or, you know, a kiosk or your credit card, those backup batteries have to work, otherwise nobody can park. And, and we have to make sure that the system maintains its integrity, so.
Other comments?
Just, just one. Look, it's, dealing with change can be hard. You know, we, it was not with any sort of haste or, you know, lack of rigorous thinking that this change was made, so, you know, I applaud everybody who, who thought hard on how to move for and, and modernize parking to the best net to benefit for the borough and for citizens. And, you know, while we're getting into that holiday mood, and I hope that lasts all year long, if you see anybody having problems with the meter, by all means, you know, offer help. Offer help, as I have done several times, if I have done several times. So, we're all in this together, and I'm very confident we are going to get through it together.
I guess I'll just round out the council here.
Basically, everybody had something to say that I would have said also, but it's one thing to say that you're, you have respect for us, and it's another thing to say things that are disrespectful. To call us bullies, to say that we don't care about the decisions we make, is not only inaccurate, but it is disrespectful. All of us on this council care deeply about every decision we make for this borough, and so I want you to keep that in mind going forward.
Anybody else?
So, I guess I'll say something as well. So, Paul, I want to thank you for coming out and, and speaking. I've gotten a few complaints about it, and I do appreciate your coming out and speaking. I don't think we're bullying, but I understand your position, and thank you for coming out.
Anybody else in the community want to speak or address?
Hi, Grace Shakni, 110 Columbia Avenue. I'm usually here to, to support the things, but this parking business with the credit cards and the whole kiosk thing, it just is hard for people. And the thing that bothers me most is, I know people who live in this town who don't have credit cards, who don't have credit, who don't have iPhones because they can't afford it, and that's what you need in order to park in this town now. And that's my main concern, and that's my main objection to the whole thing. Took me a while to get used to it, it took me a while to learn it, but I did. But there are people who just don't have the means for it, and that's my main concern, and that's what I wanted to bring up, and thank you. I appreciate the hard decisions you have to make. I know exactly what you're talking about. My main concern is that we become so successful as a town that we lose track of what it is to be a caring community. And so, if things can't be turned back the way they are, they were, just to consider these kinds of economic burdens on people when you're making decisions going forward. But thank you. Thank you for the work you do, and thank you for your patience.
This is, this is the hard part of governing, right? Making decisions and balancing those interests. I mean, there's, there's a lot of reasons why these decisions were made. You know, Grace, we saw your email today. I didn't have a chance to, to respond to it before the meeting, but, yeah, I mean, it's, if we could take coins still, I know that we would. There's, you know, we could technically do it, but if the balance came in a different direction, I think we would have, you know, still be doing it because technically, it can be done, but you have to make decisions that aren't always easy. There's nobody who's looking to make it difficult for people who can't afford, you know, most people, most people these days have debit cards if they don't have credit cards, and if they don't have, you know, iPhones, they usually have smartphones. If they don't have either of those things, there's, you know, other options, there's other parking, there's 15, there's 15-minute spots. That was another thing that we have added. I know that that's not, you know, mentioned as often because some people are concerned about the meters, but we've got free spots now in 12 different locations throughout the borough that we're going to move around based on, you know, the, the demand and how that's working, Council President.
I would just recommend, if there is someone that does not have credit or credit card or debit card, you can always purchase those prepaid credit cards at like the local pharmacy, CVS, right, at Boite's, that have, you know, they're Visa cards, they can be used as credit cards, so.
Yeah, and if you have, look, let's be fair, I mean, if you have a vehicle, then you've got to pay for the vehicle somehow, you've got to pay for insurance on the vehicle, and so, you know, there's, at some point, we get to a, we get to a moment where we make decisions based on a great, great, great majority as opposed to one or three people. You know, you got to, you got to govern for everyone, but we've got to do our very best to try to find a way to, to balance those interests. When we're paying people from DPW a lot more money than there are coins actually in the meters, then we're spending possibly a lot more money to collect a very little amount of money, and then we have issues with resources in a small borough with a budget like we have, which is also addressing some of what Paul said. So, there's, there's a lot of factors, and I haven't even named, I think I probably talked about just, from this podium, we probably referred to about half of them, but there's a number of factors that have gone into a very difficult decision that we wish we didn't have to make, but we, we got there based on other decisions we were making on parking at, at the time. Any other comments from the community?
Hello, my name is Michael Tadic, and I live at 45 Victory Court. My main concern is that when people go to pick up their food from Uber Eats or Grubhub, they park in the middle of the road, and they're on top of the car that's in the parking spot already, and then there's like 20 cars trying to go behind them, and people are screaming out the window, and people are almost getting hit, and there's no one around to like, I don't want to call, call the police and say, "There's a car here," because by the time they get there, their 15 minutes is already up. What, what is the, what would we do to stop that so there's no accidents in the middle of the road and there's people, like there's people driving, trying to find the restaurant, then there's people walking, and they're almost getting hit, and it's like, it's a whole crazy mess. It's like New York City. And we, like, I don't know what we could do to stop it, like, you can't tell someone to move because then it's a different driver the next time. There's like thousands of different drivers.
That's a really, really good point that you've raised, and one of the reasons that we decided to do the 15-minute spots. Some of our, one of our businesses, I think it was Sushi Suzuki, told our executive director of our Metatchen Downtown Alliance that only 40% of their business is eaten, and that 60% was either pickup or Uber Eats or, you know, whatever. And that was a great example of a, of a situation where it's not just the dry cleaners who need people to, you know, to, to have a quick spot to, to pick up, you know, a product. And so, we've put ourselves in a position as a community where we're trying to prioritize those pickups. Some people don't like that because they want longer periods of time to park. So, again, can't make everybody happy on these decisions that we're weighing out, but, you know, even when those spots are filled and there's people double parking, that's something that our police department does have to enforce, and they do their best, but, you know, then we've got to make decisions on police staffing, which is another part that's complicated because it's expensive, but we also value our police for traffic enforcement and parking enforcement and other issues. So, to answer your question, it's the police's job to, to enforce that. Yes, there's a lot of transient sort of Uber or, you know, Grubhub-type drivers who come in just to pick up that one time and maybe won't be in our town very often again, but, but hopefully continuously enforcing that, and, you know, it's not just a Metatchen problem, it's a, it's a problem in general, and I would hope that Uber and Grubhub would enforce that their drivers don't do that.
Our main street is kind of tight, so it's like just to have cars parking and cars going at the same time, plus that is there. Like, usually, for an example, I see it in, around like where Haley's is, in that area mostly, and it's like, it's so congested right there.
And we see it too. We're, we're driving and then we're walking in this town too, so we know. Look, in some ways, they're high-class problems because it means that our downtown's hot, right? The fact that we have to deal with the parking, the fact that we have to deal with these concerns, it's a good, it's a good problem to have, but it's a real problem. And so, I'll, I'll mention something to the chief of police.
Right, thank you very much.
I'm going to be seeing him tomorrow, and I'll mention that you said this in the microphone. Thank you. Any other comments from the community? Okay. Seeing none at this point, we're going to close public comment. Motion to close?
I make a motion to close public comment.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll close now. Communications Consent Agenda?
I make a motion to approve Communications Consent Agenda items A through C.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right. Ms. Zuban, would you please read Ordinance 2023-29 by title only?
Ordinance 2023-29, Ordinance Amending Chapter 37 of the Code of the Borough of Metatchen, entitled Police Department, to amend the composition of the Police Department.
At this time, we're going to open public hearing on Ordinance 2023-29, speaking of police staffing. Anybody wants to address additional officer for Metatchen Police Department? This time? Okay. We're going to close the public hearing on 2023-29. Council President?
I make a motion to pass Ordinance 2023-29 on second reading and published according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
All right, so, onto the introduction. Ms. Zuban, would you please read Ordinance 2023-30 by title only?
Ordinance 2023-30, Ordinance Creating the Process for Filming in the Borough of Metatchen.
I move that Ordinance 2023-30 be passed on first reading, published according to law in a public hearing set down for Monday, November 27, 2023.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Branch?
Yes.
Councilmember Janboi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyman?
Yes.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Council President Delia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're going to move on to the report of the borough administrator.
Yeah, just real quickly, two items. The first is, um, we've been having terrible issues with our phones. The police department is fine, there's some glitch or gremlin in our system, and, um, our IT people are working it out. Um, so, if anyone calls the borough, it's going to be very garbled, but you will get a voicemail and you can leave us a message, or I would suggest that you send an email. Um, the police side is fine, 911, all the emergencies are fine, but we're working through it right now, and I just wanted everybody to be aware that, um, hopefully it'll be fixed by tomorrow, fingers crossed. Um, the second thing is I'm going to give a big shout out to DPW Department and to Bernie Hetzel and all of the volunteers that decorate our downtown. Um, we are getting ready for the holiday season, it's a lot of effort, and Bernie and his group of volunteers, um, are tirelessly working to make this happen, and they all volunteer their time to make the town look beautiful over the holiday season. So, a big shout out to all of them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a great segue for me, actually, Melissa. So, our first big holiday event is coming up from the MDA, which is Small Business Saturday, which is going to be on November 25th. Um, there'll be a number of, uh, you know, uh, things going on in the downtown. You can come, uh, out to Peterson Park, um, from 11 to 7 for hot mulled cider, music, uh, holiday whimsy, it says on the website. Uh, there's going to be Santa and Mrs. Claus, um, will be around for pictures at a photo booth from 11 to 1. There's going to be some gift certificate chances that'll be happening, so please come out, um, spend your dollars in our downtown. Uh, the MDA came out with this fantastic holiday gift guide, um, that has all of, uh, all the different type of items you can find right here locally. So please, uh, check that out on their website and shop small this holiday season. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Candell?
Yeah, I just want to quickly say that the pool commission, uh, meeting will be held next Tuesday, not tomorrow as originally scheduled, and it will be held in, in council chambers. That's all I have here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hyman?
Um, okay, uh, Metatchen Cares Committee has welcomed the new member, um, Jason Winhold. Um, they were also, we, we recently met with Brandon to discuss different ways that we could get our message out, um, and we can look forward, and you may have seen some of their reports. Um, Brandon is so talented about framing messages well and getting them out to the public, and we're planning bi-weekly messages to announce, um, just to share information and to announce our events. Um, we're, we're excited to have lunch programs coming out that are, uh, we, that we have a grant. We've received a grant, uh, from, goodness. I'm forgetting the name of it. Well Springs, there you go. Um, that, so that we get a grant from them to do programming, we, uh, where seniors can enjoy a free lunch and learn programming. Um, we're also, uh, partnering with a group called CHAMP, which is Choosing Healthy Alternatives to Managing Pain. It's also a program for seniors, um, so we're doing lots of great things there. Um, the Parade Committee is excited, um, to be working on their winter events, including the menorah lighting, which will now be moved back to December 7th, the first night of Hanukkah, at 6:30, um, in the plaza. The menorah will be lit, there will hopefully be, um, some goodies to be enjoyed, and some wonderful programming, singing, uh, and joy-making. Um, we're also excitedly planning our holiday party, which will be happening on the 26th at 4:00 PM, 26th of November. Um, uh, we are still, registration is open for groups to participate in the parade, it should be a fun event, um, and Santa and Mrs. Claus will be riding through the parade on the fire department buggy, which is very exciting. Um, I also, this past, uh, weekend, um, Staff Sergeant Erin's headstone was, uh, completed and put in place, and there was a small ceremony held at the cemetery, um, I believe with the Boy Scouts. And that's it.
Great. Councilmember Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. I report from the library. Uh, the Friends of the Metatchen Library will be holding its annual meeting this Thursday, November 16th at 7:00 PM. Also, um, at, at the library on Thursday, excuse me, a graphic novel workshop, um, entitled Unmask, Talk and Draw Your Own Story, and that's presented by local artists and scholars. Um, Dia Painting will be offered on Wednesday, um, this Wednesday, November 15th, from 3:30 to 4:30 PM, to ages 10 and up, in celebration of Diwali. Um, a, a bilingual play of mariposa slash butterfly will be presented by Dragonfly Multicultural Arts Center, um, to ages four to 10 on Saturday at 2:00 PM. And in addition, at 2:30 on Saturday, there's going to be an event called Cells and Genetics Workshop, and that'll be offered to grades five through 12. Um, the library, library will be closed on 5:00 PM Wednesday through Thursday, um, the 24th for Thanksgiving and Black Friday, and, uh, it'll reopen on Saturday and at 10, 10 AM on Saturday, the 25th. There'll be a, um, therapy dog program, a pause to read with Niles, and that's at, um, it says at 10 AM. And if you have any other questions or, for other resources, check out the new Metatchen Library website. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Janboi?
Okay, so, um, once again, I want to say that the Senior Citizens Center opened or reopened again, um, after having a nicer refresh, and, uh, right, regular activities are back underway, and the membership is free to the Metatchen residents, so you can stop in Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM to view the facility and to get signed up. And, uh, they'll be having a membership drive for 2024 beginning in December. And just some reminders of, for this week, November 13th, Zumba on Tuesday will be outside, there is a trip to Jersey Shore Outlets on Tuesday, Walk with Wendy will be on Wednesday, a trip to the Woodbridge Mall, um, will be on Wednesday. And next week, and I believe it's going to be Tuesday, there will be the Thanksgiving luncheon. And let's see, I have something for Shade Tree. They met, uh, last week, and, um, we're still working on the recommended, uh, species list, you know, from a touch-in, so when someone does a project and it includes, uh, putting some trees down, they don't have to come to the Shade Tree Commission all the time, we'll have a list that they can, uh, draw from. And also, um, uh, we've been getting information from various other Shade Tree Commissions and other municipalities, and, uh, Princeton was very nice in sharing their utility-friendly tree list with us. And, um, also the fall planting update, as all the trees were planted and it went smoothly. And, uh, also, um, two members, uh, completed a tree count along Amboy Avenue on Saturday, October 14th, and they will forward the lists and images to Brian Lewis, and it was about a two-hour project, um, for them to do. And, uh, that's, uh, my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Branch?
All right, thank you. Uh, number one, Council President Jason Delia and I will be hosting a coffee for council this coming Saturday, November 18th at noon, and we will be at Pastry Lou this time, switching it up, uh, so please join us Saturday, uh, to bring us your, your concerns and questions and get to know Jason and I better. Thanks for partnering me with that, uh, Jason. Okay, so, on to, uh, committee updates. The Human Relations Commission will be hosting a Human Rights Day event Sunday, December 10th, 2 to 4 PM at the Metatchen Library. Look for more details on that soon as we get closer. And from the Recreation Commission, it is holiday time, so furthering on with some of the activities that we have, we have the Most Festive Winter House Competition coming up. Uh, residents will be voting on that, and the Form to Enter the House is open now and will be open through December 4th. Santa calling, Santa and Mrs. Claus, the Clauses are busy this time of year, uh, arrange for phone calls from the North Pole to the kids of Metatchen, but we need parents to help sign up for that, so hopefully kids are not watching this council meeting. We will ruin the whole, uh, we will ruin Christmas, right? So, parents, uh, don't show this tape to your kids. And letters to Santa, we will have a Santa drop-off box in the borough where you can send, uh, letters to the North Pole, so that's beginning on Thanksgiving. So, eat your turkey, then come down and drop your letter, uh, off at Borough Hall in a special mailbox, and we will make sure that gets sent to Santa expeditiously, and that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this point, I'm going to go on to the New Business Consent Agenda. Let's get my report started.
Sure. I make a motion to approve the New Business Consent Agenda Resolution is 2023-268 to 2023-282.
Okay, do I have a, actually, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and then obviously, um, I don't know if you want, is there anything, clarification you want to give on any of those resolutions?
Sure, I believe there is a question about one of the resolutions on here, which is our opposition to, uh, House, um, House Bill 3557. So this-
That was requested by Congressman Pallone?
Yeah, I'll go into that. So this is a, a bill that's being, working its way through the federal House of Representatives, um, and it's the, the American Broadbed Deployment Act. Um, and without being, you know, too rough here, I mean, it's essentially a big handout to, uh, corporations that, um, would be, uh, deploying and, and building out these, this infrastructure. And it's going to be, if, in its current form, it would actually be taking away a lot of the rights that we have as a local municipality to really govern and zone our public right-of-way's. Um, it's going to, it would also potentially restrict our franchise renewal, um, uh, ability with, uh, you know, so things like Channel 15 and other, other things that we have that we're really able to enforce right now could potentially be, uh, getting removed if, if this bill were to go in its current form. Um, I'm very happy to report that our Congressman Pallone, who's on the House Energy and Commerce Committee, he's really leading the charge against this. Um, in fact, during, uh, the most recent, um, committee meeting, he challenged all his colleagues to go and talk to your mayors, go and talk to your councils, and ask them what they think about this bill. So this is us answering that call from Frank Pallone and, and telling him exactly what we think of it, which is that we strongly oppose it. Um, and as, uh, uh, in, as well as Congressman Pallone, we are also members of JAG, Jersey Access Group, and the New Jersey League of Municipalities, and both of those organizations, which we are active members of, also called on all the municipalities to weigh in on this matter. So that's what this, uh, resolution is, and I'm hopeful that you all will support it.
Okay. So, you know, when we, when we spoke to the congressman's office about this, this is a, this is a distinction here. We, he was asking us how we felt about this, and if we would adopt a resolution and support will help him on the, in this regard. So that's the difference between this, I think, and others, and I struggled with that a little bit, I had some conversations with the council president about the difference between a resolution supporting a piece of legislation at the state or federal level. Typically, we wouldn't do that, but if we were, like, there are examples, for example, the League of Municipalities will ask us for something because they need to show that municipalities are in favor of support or against something, and that happens. We've had, we've done that before, it's almost like we're part of our union. In this case, not quite that. In this case, well, yeah, it's just that the congressman asked us our position on it, um, and it said that he would appreciate it if we would support this. So I think there's a difference there. You know, for example, um, is that something that if he believes it will help him to get a municipal perspective, that's different. And so I, that's, that's where I come out on it, and at the end of the day, you guys are voting on it, so I just want to make sure that you're aware of the distinction here. Obviously, directly affects Metatchen, but so does a lot of stuff that we, you know, deal with or don't deal with. You know, some things, for example, like, uh, there was the discussion about the power plant, we had that a couple of months ago, you know, there are obviously impacts there, but there was no direct concern, um, from the state as to what our position was on that. There was no interest. There were other municipalities who adopted it, but we chose on our own that if, if they weren't being considered, why would we add our voice to that? You know, um, and if legislators, for example, were to ask on the nursing resolution, that would be different if we felt like they were, they needed municipal support, but this one is being specifically asked by our member of Congress for, for a, for support so that we can possibly, um, help, help him be able to say that he has that type of support. That's the difference, I think, here, but you may disagree. And there's, there's been a motion to second, so unless there's a discussion, we can vote on this now.